Good morning. The June 16, 2020 Rule Development Workshop and Policy Work Session is now called to order. We are continuing with modifications to our workshop processes to address health and safety concerns as a result of the COVID-19 emergency. Today, board members will assemble in the boardroom without community attendance. The public may join us via our usual streaming channels. We will invite staff members in one at a time when appropriate. A registration link for public comments regarding the policies under rule development was placed on the district website on Friday, June 12, 2020, and left up until Monday, June 15, 2020 at 8:00 a.m. Anyone who registered for public comments would have been called Monday evening beginning at 5:30 p.m. Pam, roll call please.
Mrs. Belford?
Present.
Mrs. Campbell?
Present.
Mrs. Duskovich?
Present.
Ms. McDougall?
Present.
And Mr. Susan?
Present.
If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First on our agenda are the policies under rule development which I will list. 5771 on search of teachers, 7440.01 on protection of personnel and property, 8406 on reports of suspicious activity and potential threats to schools, facilities, students, and employees, 8410 on crisis event intervention and response, 8410.01 on critical incident response, and 8420 on emergency evacuations of schools. Board members first discuss these policies during the policy work session held on May 12, 2020. No persons registered to make comments on any of the above mentioned policies. Therefore, unless any board member has anything they wish to add, this will conclude the Rule Development Workshop. Board members? Any concerns on the policies presented?
No.
I'm sorry? Yes. Ms. McDougall?
No. Ms. Duskovich?
Okay. Now we will move into our policy work session. This is the board's opportunity to ask questions and request revisions. These policies will come back for rule development on June 30, 2020. We will begin with Policy 5610 on removal, suspension, and expulsion of students. I request Chris Moore, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, provide us the executive summary.
Can I go over here?
Yes.
Okay.
Hey, good morning, everyone. So this is Policy 5610. This policy is being revised to clarify, update, and change language and procedures, and other changes in compliance with applicable Florida law. Particular areas of revision include the following: changes to the policy title, removal, out-of-school suspension, disciplinary placement, and expulsion of students in Sections 1, application requirements for earned return for expelled and/or students whose expulsion and abeyance, out of district or state misconduct, waiver of suspension, expulsion, expulsion hearings, non-disputed issues of material fact, disputed issues of material fact, clarification to suspension from schools or from riding school bus, added language to Sections Board, Action, Final Order, and Appeal, and these proposed revisions encompass the suggested language from NEOLAs. And I want to just take some time to walk through them because these are substantial changes to this policy, and I think they require a little bit of discussion if you guys don't mind. So, you know, as we start off on the beginning of the policy, we're just adding some clarification language. But as you go down, we've added the removal from class. This is in line with Statute 1003.32, and this is actually the Teacher Authority Act. It wasn't in policy anywhere else that we could find it. It belongs in this policy, and so we put that in here. It's exact statute language, so no changes there. In Section E, suspension from school or from riding a school bus, you'll notice statute language number... I'm looking at my Redline version, so my numbers and letters are all out of whack. But a student may not be suspended for unexcused tardiness, lateness, absence, or truancy. That's in statute language, and we wanted to make sure to get it added into policy. The rest of that section was just moved around from other sections just to make sense. So I'll just stop here for a second and make sure there are no questions up to where we go for expellable offenses because that's where a lot of new language is.
I have one.
Yeah, G is where I'm heading now.
I'd shut it off. In B, there's that note that when it comes to our ESE students, we had to follow procedures set forth in Policy 5605, which is really short policy, and there's no procedures attached to it. So just had a question. Basically, what it says is that when it comes to ESE, we'll follow statute.
Yeah, there's actually a... There's about a 500-page book that goes with that, Policies and Procedures, and it is going to be coming to you guys probably in the next two board meetings. It's going to shock you a little bit because it's going to say 2019 Policies and Procedures because the state releases that when the state releases that, and then we have a certain amount of time to do what they want us to do. They'll point out different sections that they want us to update and correct based on statute language, and it is retro as well as forward. So that's coming to you guys pretty soon. But it's a pretty substantial hefty document that actually regulates this for us.
Will it attach then to that policy? Okay, okay. And then, thank you. And then, really quickly in C, in the definitions in number four, the definition of expulsion, I'm just wondering if that needs to match the definition later on in G because it says here, "for the number of school days remaining in a semester or term in which incident that gives rise to expulsion takes place, and one additional school year." And then later down in G, 3, I think, or hang on, I've got the number. It actually says "not to exceed."
We'll fix it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
And that was it.
All right, let's dive into G a little bit because there's a lot of changes in here. We really added process in here, which we don't typically do in policy, but because this has been a... There have been some questions about how everything rolls out from the school level through to the hearing, through to the findings. We wanted to make sure to add some language around that. So we define the process as, first, there's an administrative hearing at the school level. This is 1A. Goes to principal's decision, superintendent's recommendation, appeal process, and then if you skip down to F, there's a board hearing. That's our process in the past. We, at some point, were requested to add an additional board meeting. So I've left that in there for conversation if you guys wanted to add an additional meeting in there between the appeal process and your hearing.
Yeah, I had that question of what that additional board meeting was.
I believe that was the pre-hearing conference between only one of the... Like whoever's going to chair the expulsion hearing was going to meet with the parties for basically discussion of the issues that are going to be heard by the board and try and also resolve it before going to the full board.
Okay, but didn't we also talk about having that meeting with a staff member?
Yeah, that would be the appeal process. So the parent or guardian would meet with somebody from Leading and Learning, either the Assistant Superintendent and the designated, and determine if it was a dispute of material fact, an issue of material fact, or if it isn't, and work through it from there. So that's the staff part of it. And our understanding moving through this policy is that there was a request to add an additional meeting. So we put it in there kind of as a placeholder because we thought you guys might want to have conversation about it while we're still in this section of rule development.
Mr. Gibbs, we had talked previously. You and I had had a conversation, and there was some conversation with Dr. Sullivan, and I think you all were going to meet to kind of talk through the process. Did you get an opportunity to do that during all the craziness?
I've met with, I think, almost all of the board, and they were fine with doing the pre-hearing conference piece of it. And again, it would be like one of Dr. Sullivan's team and the parent or the representative of the student who would show up at that and just go over, hey, this is what the witnesses are going to be, this is what the exhibits are going to be. Both sides get them and then try and resolve it at that meeting as well with the board member present to oversee it as kind of the neutral in the room so that, you know, if you got an attorney or a representative or the parent, they get defensive when they're looking at the person that's also trying to bring it. So that's the way it was viewed as, you know, it might be a good opportunity for the board to say, okay, you're only challenging the discipline, not the facts so much, and you can also narrow down what's going to be at play in that actual hearing if it actually goes. That was the thought between the board members on that pre-hearing. If you don't want it, that's fine too. We can take it out.
So that, I'm guessing that is the recommendation from the conversation with Dr. Sullivan as well because I know there was some angst around that initially. I just want to make sure that we're not...
I don't believe in... And Dr. Sullivan is next door. I don't believe that is her or our recommendation. That's the process we've had. We felt that was a recommendation from the board, and so we wanted to make sure to include it. And if that goes in, if that's the direction we go in, we're good going in that. Oh, Dr. Sullivan can speak for herself. Yeah. So the... Did you hear the question? Yeah, the question was... The question was, after the appeal process, so after the parent appeals to you and Lena Wybell does that piece, is it your recommendation that we have a pre-hearing conference so they can present to you, again with a board member present, their reason for disputing the decision?
Leaving the mic right now.
Yes.
I, of course, support the board's direction. I don't personally believe it's necessary because we meet with those parents exhaustively prior to the board hearing, but I'm also happy to facilitate it if, you know, the board members are in a really difficult position at an expulsion hearing. It's the most significant action we can take against a student. And so I am entirely in support of the board members who have to make that incredibly difficult decision, you know, wanting another step in the process. We're meeting with them anyway, so on my end, it's not a concern. It's additional on your end. And I want to facilitate whatever helps you in making that really difficult decision.
Ms. Belford, my concern is the length of time we're going to add to the process. I feel like sometimes it's already so lengthy because we only meet sometimes twice a month or even less, and it takes so long. Is this going to add another week, another two weeks?
Can we ask Mr. Gibbs for a timeline? Because I personally think that there needs to be a point prior to the meeting. And why we brought this forward was because we have parents that are showing up with expectations that are different than what we can actually do. And I think that there have been instances in the past where communication from them to us and everything else gets really confused. So having a point in that process where they bring their documents, where they have their witnesses, where we qualify them, all of that stuff so that we don't have a circus is needed. So what was the timeline you were thinking about this process?
It can happen anytime before the hearing. So you could schedule, you know, they get the minimum of 14 days notice for before their hearing. In that interim, you can schedule like a pre-hearing just to prep for that. Like if you were going to trial, there would always be a pre-hearing conference with the judge before you go to trial. You come in, are there any issues that we need to be aware of before trial starts that I need to be considering? Are there any challenges to evidence? Any challenges to witnesses that are, you know, on the list for testifying and that sort of thing? It gets brought to the attention of the court before the hearing. And it's also, the judge will ask, have you guys considered resolutions? You know, have you gone to mediation or whatever? Usually, they order mediation in courts. You don't do that here, but you can always say, have you guys been talking? They talk all the time, all the way up until the day of hearing. So that part is going to be there, but they... It's still an opportunity to resolve them. And I have seen many of these in Marion. They resolved all the time in my two years at that pre-hearing conference. When they get in the room, they get with the board member, and they're going over all this. Then they say, hey, have you guys had a chance to talk? And they say, hey, can we go out and talk again? And they come back and say, we're resolved.
And that was the... If I can, I'm sorry.
That's fine. And it's really up to whoever's going to chair the... My recommendation, but if you're going to do that, whoever's chairing that hearing would sit. That's the only board member that needs to be there. You don't have to have the full board there. It would just be the one member, so whatever their schedule allows for up before that hearing. So it wouldn't add any length to the 14 days. It's just whoever's going to chair it would know that in that 14-day window, there needs to be scheduled a pre-hearing conference.
And I think the idea that we created this was to reduce the outcome of a lot of our expulsions. So I think one board member with staff prior, as he's had experience up in Marion County, would reduce three board members, witnesses, staff, everybody. And that piece is where I was... When I heard this, I really was excited about it because we have literally an entire administrative staff that leaves during an expulsion process. We have all of those components that are at that meeting. We can avoid, as he says, many of those just by a pre-trial and making them present all the information. I mean, we've sat multiple times through expulsions, and each time, they come in with an expectation that we, as quasi-judicial members, cannot even make those decisions.
They just declare, they aren't presenting their evidence. They're just going to... You'll have like exchange your lists. Like who's your witnesses and who's that? And then you get to clarify. The chair would get to say, all right, you're only challenging the discipline. I know when I've been there, it's sort of, they don't really know what they're challenging so much, whether it's the facts or the discipline. And that's something I wanted, I would, I had recommended we clarify with the documents where they specifically state, I'm only challenging the discipline versus the facts and the discipline because those are different issues.
May I? So what would be the difference in someone from staff handling that conversation? I mean, maybe, I know from our expulsion hearings that we have this problem, obviously, and they sometimes don't know what they're challenging. But if that was clarified in paperwork and in one of their many meetings, would that help? Or you feel, I mean, you've watched this unfold in Marion. So is it that beneficial, all of a sudden now that a board member, they feel like they're being heard by a board member? Is that why they then settle or they come to some conclusion?
It seems that the board member being present is almost like a neutral because they're not the one presenting the case. When it's the administration, they're the ones that are bringing the charges against their students. So they get defensive. And I mean, I understand like, hey, they're just saying, hey, here's what it is. You know, Dr. Sullivan, if she's the one sitting in that meeting with the parent, isn't the one that brought charges. The principal, you know, got the violation, and the dean's investigated or however it came up to the principal who made the recommendation based on board policy. Parents get defensive, you know, my kid didn't do that. Or for whatever reason, they get defensive, and they want to defend their child, and that's understandable. But when the board member's there, that's who's going to be sitting in judgment. It seems like it kind of alleviates some of that tension, and parents will make, state their piece, if you will, to the board member, and that kind of deflates the adversity in the room. And then that seems to make them a little open to discussing settlement a little better, especially if the board member clarifies, you know, you're only challenging the discipline. Why do we need, or why do you need all these other witnesses if it's only the discipline piece?
Do they make... Ms. Belford, continue. Do they make decisions in that hearing? So if they're challenging the discipline, who's in that meeting exactly? The family and the student disputing?
The family, or the student and the parent, or their representative, or all of them can be there.
And one board member? And are you present in that meeting?
Yes.
And anyone else?
Dr. Sullivan?
Yeah, who, someone from administration would be there.
Okay. And so the family is upset over the level of discipline. Can a decision be made at that meeting till...
The board member does not make any decision. It would be a resolution.
But could it be mediated, like at that point?
You exchange. You exchange. It's really like, here's the evidence. They're going, you know, the administration's going to give all the witnesses and everything that they're going to call and intend to call at that hearing. Here's the exhibit list that we're going to present. And in most cases, it's, you know, here's the investigative packet. That's what it is. Then the parent gives their witness list and exhibit list to the administration if they didn't already have it. So a lot of times, they already have it because they wanted to conduct some sort of discovery. So a lot of times they already have it because they wanted to conduct some sort of discovery. Then there's that, you know, do you have anything to say? The administration usually says the charges are based on this and they kind of walk through the investigation. The parent will say, you know, my kid didn't do it, or this was all a misunderstanding. And they'll say their piece. And at that point, it's like, have you guys discussed resolution? Is there any chance at resolving the matter here before the hearing? And they'll say, yes, we've discussed, we would like to discuss a little further. Oftentimes, they would go out of the room and discuss with administration the opportunities for settlement. And then they would come back, we've settled, we haven't settled, but we're going to continue to talk. We just need to clarify something with administrative staff. And they would go on and then we'd get a call that we, uh, they settled. In two years, I never had one expulsion hearing go to the board.
It's so strange to me that, because how many meetings do you all have before? You keep saying extensive, so you've met several times and tried to, right?
Yeah, um, sometimes a lot, um, sometimes less. Um, you know, one of the things that I feel strongly about, as frustrating as those hearings are, as, um, difficult as it is on everyone, it's the single most serious thing that we do. And so we believe we should take as much time as necessary, as much people as necessary, as much process as necessary. And even if it's a really long meeting, on the scale of the action we took against the child, you know, I, I think that's okay. So for our end, we're willing to talk as many times, you know. The, the difficulty is that, um, you know, we annually, maybe six or seven a year that have a board hearing, it's, it's coming from emotion of the parent, not necessarily a logical response. And they need that moment to be, they feel that it's an important part of being their child's parent. Um, and we're okay with that too. So, um, my feelings are, I'm entirely comfortable with any of it. What I didn't want to do is change it mid-year last year. Um, I felt really strongly about that, um, about trying to implement a process midstream because we're constantly flooding policies and procedures at our deans that are on the, in the midst of everything. And so I felt really strongly about not changing mid-year, which is why when we went and worked on the preliminary change for this upcoming year, we included that the board had mentioned this desire and wanted you all to decide. For me, I'm, we're already doing those. We're already, so none of that is extra work for us. None of that is work that I don't think is important. So we are already willing to meet and discuss and modify within the scope of policy, of course, because then there's the point that we can't, um, prior to them getting to you. Which is why a lot of them cancel, even though they're scheduled, because we continue to work with the families right up until the day of the hearing. So it's no more work on our part because we're doing it already. Um, it's just a matter of how formally do we want to write it into policy? That this is a, like, required exact step? Um, that's okay too? That's really up to you guys because it's your policy that would last for, hopefully we don't have to change it next year. So that's really up to you. In terms of practice, I'll do whatever. Um, it's not more work for us. I, I believe the parent should be able to talk to me and meet with me and Lena and the principals as many times as they want. So we're really comfortable with any of it. It's really your, your policy, your plan, or if, if in practice, we try it before we put it in policy, I'm okay with that too. Honestly, it's, it's not a hindrance on me, it's a new practice for you guys.
Can I jump in here a minute? So I, I think it's a good idea, only because as a neutral person, you may not need to meet as often if we join one time. Um, but I am concerned that it would be the person who's the chair, which would be Ms. Belford or Mr. Susan. Because typically, the three of us don't chair those expulsion meetings. So I, I'm wondering if we want to look at it in a different way, just for, if we agree to go that way.
The rotation, you mean?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Or if it's, I don't know what you think, Mr. Gibbs, if it's a student, if it's one of our schools, of course, it could, that could be a problem too. So I was just wondering if, if it was in our district, if we wanted to, to be the person in that appeals. I, I just throwing things out, but anyhow. I don't think it's a bad idea. I think it could alleviate some of those, um, intense meetings that we end up in.
Ms. Belford?
The only thing I would say to the one that's coming out of your district is you might get a conflict. More, more frequently, if it's coming out of your district, you know the parents or?
Sometimes they've already contacted us before the hearing.
That's true. Or it's your friend.
And you know those people. You know the groups they're going to bring in. You know the, like, when they go to bring witness testimonies, they're doing that on purpose to bend you. So I think that I absolutely agree with you, that, that, that we should almost be removed if the person's inside of our district from being that person.
Ms. Belford?
I, I would just say, you know, if you want to give it a test run, you don't have to add it to policy now. You can always add it to your orders or your letters saying, you know, let's go this way. You'll be scheduled for a pre-hearing conference prior to the actual hearing date. And it's not in policy. And if you try it out for a couple and it's like, hey, it's not really working, they're still going to hearing and you, we're just going to take it out and let them do whatever they've been doing, trying to resolve them.
That makes sense. Ms. Belford, I just, you know, just thinking through the kinds of hearings that we have, we usually have, I mean, there are a few times that we have, um, parents disputing the facts of the case, you know, or whatever. But that's, that's usually a smaller portion of the ones that I've served on or been aware of. Um, seems like a lot of them are wanting a more leniency in the, um, you know, the discipline. But then there's sometimes people who don't actually question either one. They're just upset with the, how it went, which actually can't really get resolved, but they want to be heard. I think that's where something like this could be helpful because, you know, we just want to be heard. We felt like we were mistreated or whatever, but, you know, there's been some of those. So in that case, you know, if it's just an opportunity for, you know, because they want to be heard, they want to keep moving up the chain, right? And the board is the next, um, place up the chain. So I, um, to have someone there, I just, as long as it's, you know, the board member is not making any decisions, there's, there's the only result that could come out of that as far as resolution is a resolution with, you know, what you guys have talked about. Usually we walk out of there and it's just a, hey, a renewed explanation of the alternative school process or what their options are, when I know you guys have fully presented them before, but sometimes there's that mental block. They're not ready to go there yet. Um, so I, you know, but I, I like the idea of maybe not putting it in policy yet. Thoughts, um, Dr. Sullivan and Ms. Moore?
I certainly am in favor of that, just, but again, it's your policy and however you want to generate the policy. Um, we would certainly be happy to, uh, give it a go, um, just from a procedural standpoint. Um, so either, honestly, we'll make anything work, um, just to help facilitate you all's comfort in those tough decisions.
If I may suggest, my, my only fear with not putting anything in policy is if we request a pre-trial hearing and they look at policy and say, there's nothing in policy that says that I must participate in a pre-trial hearing. So might I suggest that we put into policy that the board may request or the district may request a pre-trial hearing? And that way, it's, it's documented, but it's not a, we have to? Would that, Mr. Gibbs, what's your opinion on that?
That's fine, you can make it a permissive. I mean, if it's, you know, hey, my kid didn't do this and it's adamant and administration is saying, hey, the parents are fighting tooth and nail all the way, then it might not be something that you want to go to, uh, you know, if they've lawyered up and they have attorneys coming to represent their kid, then they might not.
So would the board be comfortable with that?
Maybe the language, any party may request, is that?
That's fine.
And then I like the idea of rotating. The chair has a lot to do already all the time. And so I really do like the idea of everyone getting the experience of, of chairing that if, if you all are.
I mean, it can always be, if you didn't want someone who was going to sit on that panel, one of the other two will sit on that pre-hearing. That way, that person is not going to be sitting in judgment. So they really are neutral. They're not going to come in there and hear any facts prior to the thing. They're just going to try, their main motivation's going to be, hey, what do we need to do to try and resolve it?
And if, if there's a way of making sure it's, I don't know if it matters necessarily if they're in our district and we don't know them, but it, I think that always is better if it's not our district.
So I think it's an amazing policy and appreciate your knowledge on this in process for Marion County. It'll, it already says that it'll reduce our expulsions. Um, it also says that, um, reduce our staff time. Look, if we can avoid having the SRO, the principal, the assistant principal, the teacher out of the school for half the day, because when that happens, we pull people from other schools to cover them. That alone is worth this policy. Um, this is a streamlined process. The other thing that drives me crazy during these is that they bring non-qualified witnesses. Those are not, if you read the quasi-judicial process inside the administrative law books, there's a qualified list. You are not supposed to be a witness unless you are a qualified witness. And you have a persistence that reduces the pontification over these things. Like it, it, I love that streamlined process of presenting your evidence.
Are you, when you say qualified, are you referring to the representative, not the witness?
No, the witnesses.
A witness is just a witness. I mean, anyone can be a witness. There is a process for qualifying as a representative. They're supposed to apply.
On a specific topic.
Well, just to be a representative, there's a qualifying process in the, in the administrative code for qualifying as a representative. So that is a separate process.
So what you're saying is if they wanted to bring five people to talk about what a wonderful, you know, kid that is, is in background is like a character witness type thing, they can bring as many of those as they'd like.
They can't be redundant. So I mean, there is prohibitions of being redundant. So if they have five people that are going to come in and say the same thing, it would be, hey, you've got, you know, until they start testifying, you don't prohibit them. It would be, once they start, hey, this is, you know, redundant evidence, you know, can we move on to something that's not?
And in other cases where they say that this is an expert witness, and we've seen in many cases inside of it, that it's a friend that has some kind of connection to something, those aren't expert witnesses. So we should not be hearing the testimony from that person as an expert witness. So, and then the other thing is, is that I love it because it's a common practice in law to have pre-trial, um, mediation in everywhere we go. Every single process that you have, you have pre-trial mediation. And this is part of the process that we have. So I like it. Um, I would actually say that we put it into policy because, uh, I'm afraid that if we're saying that we can request, they can request, that it might lead to a discrimination or an argument that, uh, what do you think about that? Like if, if we leave it that way and all of a sudden, there's one time that we don't accept it, does that create a discrimination that we did to somebody else? Does that make sense to you?
I mean, it's really, if you're doing it based on just, I mean, you, you could open yourself up to a little bit of a claim, but I think it would be more on, you could easily show it was the facts of the situation. Um, if the board's wanting options just to kind of test it out, I think that would be one thing for leaving it permissive. If it really works, then it's cutting things down and they're resolving at these hearings. The board might want to say, we're just going to make it mandatory when, you know, the next year or something. And then, but it, it does leave it so that you don't have to do it right now.
That was my only concern, is that it leaves us open for one of these lawyers to say that you didn't hear and you did hear and give a little bit of hook, that's all. That due process, that due process speech that we keep getting smacked with.
If we include what Ms. Duskevich said, so that either party can request?
Yeah, the school board or either party may request a pre-hearing.
But if you say, they've got a lawyer, they've got this, so we're just not going to request it. And then another family goes and gets a lawyer later and says, well, the main premise, why is it that you decided not to take the pre-trial? Why didn't you do that? Well, because they had a lawyer. Well, that's discrimination.
Why would we, if someone requested it, why would we?
What would we, the reason behind it would be why we wouldn't. Why would we not? And if those processes can be seen as discrimination, then I, that's where my issue with it is, that's all.
I, I wouldn't be overly concerned. I would, like I said, my recommendation is to hold them. So I mean, my intent would be, why wouldn't you sit down with them pre-hearing? But if you don't want it to be mandatory for whatever reason, you can always leave it permissive as suggested.
Yeah, I thought on the, on the request is not that we would, they would request it and we'd say no, but they would request it if they want one. If they don't request it, then we don't have one.
Not on their part, what I meant was on our part.
Yeah, if we're requesting it of everybody but people with lawyers is what he's arguing. But I would say bring them all in.
That's what, that's why I was saying, if we're going to do that anyway, then it might be worth it.
I think the reason to not make it mandatory in the policy is if after a year, we think, or even six months, it's not making a difference, we can back off from it without having to go through a whole policy change. Not, so for me, it wasn't so much that we're going to pick and choose who we're going to do this with.
No, and I, and I agree with you. My thing is, is that no matter what, we would have to go through a policy change. So if we make it a policy change now, we would have to make it a policy change to remove. If we didn't make it a policy change now, we would have to make it a policy change to add.
Not if, not if it's option, not if it's, you can request. And in our procedure, just we stop requesting on our part. It still means they could request, but we're not going to, we're not going to drive it.
So the policy would remain forever that both sides can request?
Until we needed to change it again for something else. I, I think that's the point of making it flexible. I'm not hard-nosed on that, Mr. Susan, I'm just.
Makes sense. No, 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 I'm, I'm okay with it, I just.
I just want to capture some of your thoughts, so, because we're going to wrap some language around this. Uh, it's going to be titled, "Pre-hearing Conference." Uh, what I just heard is either party may request a pre-hearing conference and it's within the 14 days prior to the hearing, that the, that a board member will chair, will, um, and that board member will be whoever is not presiding in the hearing itself.
Or one of the two that are not going to sit on the panel.
Yeah, I'll, I'll work on the language, but that was my understanding. Um, and preferably not from the area that the student is residing in themselves. Um, that the purpose of the hearing is to determine if, uh, what is being challenged is discipline or facts and that, um, there could be mediation as an outcome, but that a board member will not render judgment at that pre-conference hearing. Did I miss something?
I don't, I don't think you missed anything, but I, I think it's, maybe we should not have in policy that it has to be someone that's not on the, I just foresee, I think that should be our practice and we should try to do the things that have to do with who's serving where. I just foresee someone out of town, someone's sick, now there's, and we're going to get ourselves violating our own policy.
Okay. We'll get some language and the next time you see this, it'll be something for you to look at.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry, if I could ask one more clarifying question. Um, so this pre-hearing conference would include myself, the relevant board member, Mr. Gibbs, and students and a member of the school. I just want to make sure I.
No, no, it really, it could be you or like Ms. Wybell. If you wanted Ms. Wybell to sit in, it could be the parent only. It doesn't have to be the student there. It could be there, if they have a lawyer, it could just be their lawyer that shows up with the parent.
Are we recommending school administration?
No, they don't need to be there yet.
You're recommending them not be at that meeting?
Yeah, the only people that need to be there is like just a representative, like you or who you want to show up on behalf of the district, the parent or, or their representative along with the parent. And then the board, whoever, whatever board member's going to be there. And then I would be there to advise the board member.
Okay. Thank you. May want to stand near the door. All right, we're good to move on from, uh, that section of G. Any other questions on G?
Um, number, oh, nevermind, that was it. Oh, I did have, does this policy need to say something? Um, has something about only three board members, um, sitting on the expulsion hearing or? It doesn't include that anywhere, but I mean, and if it's not necessary, you know, no reason to add it, but, um, that will sit on the, the expulsion hearing?
Yeah, the Neola language was super specific, but it's not how we hold hearings. So I'll leave that to, um, Mr. Gibbs to say whether or not we have to include that into this policy specifically.
Actually, I think this is H, sorry, H1. All expulsion hearings will be conducted by members of the school board.
Yeah.
Which is fine, because it doesn't say. And then, um, no, the other one was related to suspensions. I had a question about something, uh, that's back up, so if we want to wait, um, or if we can go back now.
Yeah, whatever, I'm fine going back.
Um, so I, because this situation has come up before, um, and sorry, I should have jumped, I didn't real, I forgot that this was suspension, suspensions and not expulsions. But in our suspension policy or procedures or somewhere, do we have something that is allowing principals to delay a suspension? You know, the policy, as I read it, said, you know, unless they're in a, you know, a serious threat, at the time need to be removed from campus immediately, um, the suspension will start the following morning, right? The following school day. Um, the reason why I ask is because I believe there have been times when a suspension has been delayed so that a student can participate in an athletic event or extracurricular event. And let's. and let's say that track meet or whatever is on a Tuesday, they get suspended on a Monday, we're going to start your suspension on Wednesday so that you can participate in the track meet. Is there something in our policy that would prohibit that, or that allows it, or speaks to it in any way?
And if I can add to that, it may not just be an athletic event, it could be finals week, or something of that nature, or FSA week, SAT week.
Right.
There's, you know, academic reasons, too.
And that's why, I don't know that it needs to say when to wear there, because there could be times when, right, you've got testing going on or whatever, but I don't necessarily, I'm not particularly fond of the idea of delaying a suspension so that star athlete can participate in the track meet.
It is, I will tell you that it is, it is in our practice to start the suspension the next day unless there's reason to start it the day of the event, and that happens. There's nothing in here that specifically says it has to, because it's left up to, you know, principal judgment. We can work on some language and bring it back and see if it captures the, we don't want them suspended for SAT, but we, we also don't want them playing, you know, in the basketball game that night, or football game that night. So we can work on some language to wrap around that and see if you like it.
Yeah, I, I hate to make it super complicated, but to be completely honest, it, it very poorly reflects on our schools, and it's unfair to the other students to say, hey, I just saw them in a fight and they got suspended, and here they are, you know, at this activity. I don't, you know, it doesn't, and I don't think it makes our staff, our teachers, feel good about it either, so, yes, if you could.
Yeah, I, I will, and certainly if there is an occasion to let us know that that happens, that shouldn't be happening, and we'll be happy to address that.
Okay.
I, I can't say I can tell you that never happens, but I can say I think it's a very small exception.
Right.
So yeah, we'll work on that language.
I have concerns about polit, putting that in, taking away authority from a school. I, I obviously don't want that to happen either, Ms. Campbell, but I just think we need to maybe think about that, or have some more discussion about that with maybe a few principals, or, you know, you all, Dr. Sullivan. Are there, is there going to be, are we going to put something hard-nosed in a policy now that the principal's hands are tied when they're, you know, now someone is, grandma's died, you know, that's not in there, it's not clear, we have to, I just want to make sure we're not taking away authority that a principal may have.
Yeah.
While still making sure.
That's my, that's my concern also. I, I don't want to tie the principals, I'm assuming that they make the best decision, and they know the students, and that the, the discipline fits the infraction. So I get concerned when we put something like that in policy.
It may already be covered, and there, we added an item under suspension that talks about suspension of extracurricular activities, but if we can, we'll, we'll take a step back, we'll look at language that allows principal autonomy, but also says, you know, you can't delay a suspension based on an athletic event. We'll, we'll bring you something that tries to balance out what you guys are saying.
Thank you, appreciate that. Yeah, it does, I did notice there was the line that said, my understanding of that particular line was, I'm trying to find it, that it was, that that wasn't necessarily part of the suspension time, but let's say a student, you know, let's say from, from now until the end of the semester, you're not allowed to participate in, let's say, student dances, or that, that's the point of that line.
Yeah, that's the purpose of it.
Right, okay.
But it's, it's there, so we can try to figure out what the language has to be to, to balance the, you know, principal has to be able to make judgment based on what's in front of them and the best needs of their school and students.
Right.
But, you know, shouldn't be basing the judgment on their win-loss record.
Gotcha.
So we'll, we'll work on some language to.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Gibbs, do you have a concern about the 14 days prior?
No.
Because it kind of extends back in, okay.
Okay. That's all I have. All right, I'm moving on to H, guys, the expulsion hearing itself. We did add that whole section, that whole section came from Neola language, with the exception of number five, which was at the request of the board. So if we take a look at number five, that's about appropriate behavior in the board hearing itself by all parties, and we used the language of, from the board meetings, and we added that should somebody have to be removed, it does not stop the hearing, the hearing goes on to its conclusion, because we didn't want anybody to think that we would stop and reschedule based on bad behavior. So any questions about H, the expulsion hearing? I and J were just the conversation about whether, what is being disputed in the hearing, again, that's straight Neola language. Is it an item of disputed fact, meaning is it, you know, the facts of the case, or is it discipline or emotion? But that should be covered in the pre-hearing conference, and I may be moving I and J under that section as a one and two, because that's what should come out from the pre-hearing K and L were added there, Neola policy, this has always been in statute, so we wanted to make sure that we put in there the board action, the final order, and a parent's right to still appeal after the board action. And starts talking about earned return. This section was added, it was always in there in part, but earned return has always been at the principal's decision of whether to offer it or not offer it for certain offenses. Leading and learning monitored that, and if it wasn't offered, they always called and said, why didn't you offer this, for this offense or that offense? We decided to go ahead and put in, these will definitely be offered, and these will definitely be not offered, earned return. And the reason that we did that is to ensure that principals knew that some situations are not judgment. Don't send it up to leading and learning, because they're just going to call you back and say, why didn't you offer earned return? Just do it right this first time. So those items were alcohol possession, sale, use, oops, I just found a mistake. It is not for distribution of drugs, it should be just sale, possession, should be just possession and use, is that correct, Stephanie? Yeah. Should be just possession and use. Sale and distribution belong on the not earned return list. Bus transportation procedure violation, major, chronic misconduct, classroom disruption, cyber stalking, drug use, possession excluding alcohol, failure to report criminal offenses, fighting as opposed to battery, larceny, 750 greater, network internet misuse and vandalism will all be offered earned return. The following offenses will not be offered earned return, and they're eligible under statute. The following will not be offered earned return. Arson, battery with more serious injury, drug sale or distribution, false accusation against a staff member, homicide, kidnapping, sexual battery, threat and intimidation, or weapons possession. What you see between those two, two lists, if you look at the definitions of those offenses, is in the definition, it shows you where, which are minor, and how you reach the major status, and what the difference between those two are. There's, there's, there's a line between those, many of those, too. And in addition to that, there are some that are still going to be judgment. It's going to require the principal and leading and learning to have a conversation case by case, what are the situations surrounding it, give us more information before they decide whether or not they, they offer earned return. Questions about that? The earned return policy in, in general is the same as it was. We've added a little bit of language about drug testing, because we used to give three drug, three drug tests. Now we give one prior to them leaving, and one within three weeks of them being in their home school. If they test positive on either of those drug tests, their earned return is taken away. Any questions about earned return?
Student, I'm sorry, on letter D, when a student, if we have a student who.
Ms. Campbell, make sure your mic is on, you're a little quiet.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think I left it on, it was, I wasn't close enough, sorry. Thank you. In letter D, when it comes to a student, the parent legal guardian, if we have a student that is, doesn't necessarily have that person in place, do we have an option for family therapy, is there something, just, I mean, we do have some students that are on their own.
Yeah, our students will get, I'm going to, I'm not going to say, I think I know what happens, but I'm going to double check, and I'm going to get back to you guys on that. Typically, we don't let a student who's under 18 go to a hearing by themselves, we offer them a guardian ad litem representation, but let me get more specific, and I'll get you that answer.
What the therapy sessions might look like for a student in that situation?
Okay.
Thank you. That's not a very policy question, just wondered what we do in that situation.
Ms. Moore.
Yes.
On the drug testing, so, does this mean we will not test them at all while they're at the ALC?
They get tested, they don't get tested when they first arrive. We spent a lot of money testing kids when they first arrive.
Which doesn't make much sense if we just caught them using drugs.
That's exactly right.
It's going to be positive.
That's exactly right. So it was no big surprise to us how many positive tests we got when they first arrived. So we test them at the end, this is, this could be anywhere, an earned return could be anywhere between like four and a half weeks and nine weeks, so, you know.
Are we doing, I, I know previously we would test periodically, so my, my, kids are smart, right? If they know the drug test is in three weeks, so we're not, I feel like, I know people are listening, but even if we're not going to test, we shouldn't tell them we're not going to test. Bold and clear in our policy, so that maybe they'll stay clean. Anybody?
We can assume they don't read policy and just tell them, you're going to be tested at some point.
Well, why, why would we put in policy exactly when the tests are coming? That's, I guess, my question. Can't that be more of a procedural thing, and in policy, we just say you will be tested?
I don't think it says the time, does it? Oh, within, within, within three weeks of returning.
So if you're six months at the ALC, you could be drug-using the whole time you're at the ALC, and.
Well, they wouldn't be eligible for earned return if they're there for six months. That's, that's a whole different category of kid. Earned return is, you're basically back in your school between four and a half weeks and nine weeks.
The semester.
Yeah.
Or quarter, even.
Yeah.
A quarter.
So I can take out kind of some of the defining language, and just say you will be drug-tested during this time, both at the ALC and at the home school, and leave it open?
This is just our policy, this is, there's no statute language regarding.
There, I don't believe that is in statute language, I believe that is our policy, but I'll double check that, too.
Thank you.
Ms. Moore, I'm going to interrupt very briefly before we continue to move through the policy. Our board meeting is scheduled to start at 9:30, and we are quickly approaching that. With the okay of the board, I would like to at least finish discussion on this policy, and then we can adjourn the policy session, go to our board meeting, come back to our policy session. Does that work for you guys?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Moore, go ahead.
Sure. Finally, anything to do with out-of-state conduct, that is just straight Neola language. We had language in there, it wasn't Neola, Neola says basically the same thing, but if a student comes from out of state and is under an expulsion, we have the right to upheld that expulsion and/or have a hearing, and that's basically what that language says. Is there any questions about that? All right. Any questions in general? I'll be taking, go ahead.
I have one quick question, and it's not really specific to policy, but more to process going forward. Mr. Gibbs, we had spoken previously when we were talking about the changes to the expulsion process, about some changes to our forms as well that may help to.
Yes.
Streamline. Have you had an opportunity to work with Dr. Sullivan on that?
I've gotten the samples that I will share with Dr. Sullivan to work on those forms.
Okay, super, thank you. All right, if we could, we are going to recess our policy session for about, well, we're recessing the policy session, we're going to take about a five-minute break, and then we will come back and convene our board meeting, so we will be back at 9:35.